You're nuts.
I know, that's what I said. I said I would have.
You're nuts. That's why there's a life insurance.
I am.
We will get started about 30 seconds. That was interesting. There's Halloween sounds going on outside. Okay, we will call this work session to order. We have several things on the agenda here tonight, beginning with a presentation from the Home Builders Association and also with market graphics as it relates to the master plan. So Sullivan?
Thank you Chairman Hollander. Good evening, members of the council. A pleasure to be here tonight and we won't take too much of your time. We have kind of two presentations, a short video by the HBA and right before that, a presentation by Mr. Joe Zanola, who is an expert on demographics and housing in the St. Louis metropolitan region. And to give you an idea of kind of why we're here, you've just been looking at your county master plan. That's a document that I've spent a lot of time with over the years. I've been here almost 40 years in the county, or as my home builder friend Harold Burkheimer refers to me as a newcomer. Nonetheless, I've served on a couple of your committees in the past and we do have a lot of interest in what goes on with the county master plan. It's a different document, also the zoning maps of the county. Just to present at your work session tonight, Mr. Chairman, there's probably not ample time to get into the detail of master plans. We would like to basically leave with you just a message. And the message basically is we'd love to talk with you more about it. We'd love to be a resource when issues come up. I want you to know that the Home Builders Association never advocates for or against any rezoning proposal. We advocate for certain concepts and approaches, but we're not in favor of any housing proposal or we're not against any housing proposal. I did bring with you though, with me tonight, a photo that hangs on the wall, actually it's a newspaper ad, that I thought would kind of in a second hopefully illustrate kind of the message that we'd like to leave with you tonight. And that is that you really need to embrace and be open to change because things change. You need to be ready to be flexible because the market changes. This happens to be an ad from the 1952 St. Louis Globe Democrat showing Hathaway Hills, a 1,600 home community in St. Louis County. It's as big and was as aggressive and active as anything you've ever seen or will see in St. Charles County frankly. This is where it was happening at that point in the St. Louis region's history. And you can see the floor plans, I realize you can't see the detail, but the floor plans of the homes and the hot seller was this three-bedroom, one-bathroom home. And my point is, that's what everybody was buying in St. Louis at that time. But if a builder tried to come to you today or wanted to build that home today, he'd go broke. Nobody'd buy it. And so the whole point is, this was the best of the best at one point in time when everybody was buying. Today frankly, almost no one would buy that same model. So things change and we're asking and encouraging you to recognize avoiding rigidity, pursuing flexibility and being open to change is what we see and feel is necessary to accommodate the wants, the needs, the desires of a changing buying public as they come and want to be our neighbors in St. Charles County. With that, I would like to introduce Joe Zanola. Joe has a brief presentation and if it works for you, maybe we can hold questions until after Mr. Zanola presents. We'll show you a short video that we think further illustrates the need for building good communities that embody change. And then after that, if there are any questions, we'll certainly be happy to discuss with you and then we'll be on our way. Joe is an expert in demographics and the home building industry and housing in general in the St. Louis region and also works in a number of other markets as well. So he is someone who I think can give you a very good flavor. His presentation by the way is independent of ours, so I don't know exactly what Joe's going to say, but I think nonetheless, he'll bring good information that you can kind of put in your memory banks as you move forward making decisions. Joe, good evening.
Good evening. Nice to sit here so close to you. My business, Zanola Company, is part of a group of research professionals in new home building, new housing, market graphics is the publication that we do. So I want to see if I, there we go, great. I'm going to talk to you, reference the work that we do on an ongoing basis, then refer to a specific project that we completed in 2012. On an ongoing basis, market graphics, applied research for the St. Charles County market since 1992. To start that work, we actually went back to 1982. So really have a good understanding of what the housing market is. Every four months, we publish 250 pages of housing research. St. Charles County being 40% of the market, 10 counties which is remarkable, we have lots of information we put out. Not going to go in that specifically tonight in terms of available property, housing demand, housing supply, to really have our fingers on the pulse. And we do this by physically driving all new home communities, doing a real-life audit as well as visiting our courthouse and picking up the new records and tracking permits. Having done that since 1992, we saw some things happening that we felt we wanted to go deeper and really ask this one big question, which is about housing and demographics, how do they match up going forward for St. Charles County? We approached the Economic Development Council, which led us working for the Partners in Progress and over a six-month period did, I was talking to you about the 250 pages we publish every four months in the St. Louis market. We ended up creating around 500 or 600 pages of data information, doing an extensive research on housing needs analysis in the entire St. Charles County market. That is the EDC's Property Partners in Progress, they're doing some follow-up on that these days. But I borrowed a few things to show you that I felt was relevant in this night. So in those hundreds of pages I mentioned, I'm just going to take a few minutes and show you six or seven slides. This one question here led to other questions, what is, how are demographics changing, what are our housing needs? What is our housing inventory? What's the pipeline? What happens as home building recovers? Is housing relevant beyond being the place to live? It's real interesting and been very tough and really admirable for county, the building, everyone and how we've gotten through some tough times, but it's given us a chance to really look at the county and see where we've come in such a really incredible short period of time, but also now begin to reflect where we're going forward. To answer these questions, we did an extensive analysis. We had the database that I talked about in terms of what we do every four months. We also worked with your assessor's office and got the entire inventory, supply of all homes in that. And we created a remarkable database that we categorized all housing, existing housing, not only new home building, but had thousands of records and put those into different home types. And we associated those with the demographics of the market, households, what we would expect a socio-economic basis, household size, to what the housing needs to be. So we were doing an entire county's comparison of the housing supply, based the current demographics and then looked at the route we were on in terms of building houses and where the demographics are going. And found a number of very interesting things. And I'm going to show you just a few charts to help me remember a few things to point out. One is that the growth rate that we've gone through in the past two decades is tapering off. And the way the projections work, we're kind of saying, well, that projected growth rate in five years, we don't feel like is really going to measure up to the 8.8% that's being forecasted, being projected, but time will see. The point is, we have a more moderate growth than we have before. And what we all sit back and think of as far as St. Charles County in the growth years and everything, we begin to say, okay, what are we, who are we, who are we serving now? We were surprised to find out that 53% of the households are one or two persons, that over half the homes are built since 1990, and that the greatest increases in population are happening in everyone over 55 years old. So we have a changing dynamic. While your county is continuing to grow in the midst, and probably is what we've determined, the only county in the 10 regions, St. Louis region that is growing, we're within a region that is not. While your growth here is really encouraging and admirable, we're beginning to see some things that resemble the rest of the market. And the one is, the strength of the growth rates in the population, households over 55, the kind of a little bit of a surge in what we call the echo boomers, those that kind of before 24, and then a little bit of a valley in the 25 to 44 age groups. We're still showing some, kind of holding around here while the rest of the market is not holding on. But it gives us pause to really reflect back and think about, okay, if we have over half the homes that were built in the last 20 years, we began to take the characteristics homes, matching them up with the demographics, and really came up with some things. Now, this is a large quantitative analysis of the entire county, so we're not talking about specific areas, but when we're looking at things, we began to do this and we approached this from the standpoint of what I think is a very noble and needed viewpoint, and that is, are we providing the housing that allows people to be lifelong residents within a county, within a community? I think everyone wants to be that. But then we began to see some issues that concerned us in terms of those areas that are of growth the most, the kind of the initial household formations in about 55, and we're having trouble in the context of all the homes being built the last 20 years, really being able to see how those would match up. We saw some shortages coming pretty soon in terms of being able to really accommodate those particular age groups. And also without the significant growth that we've had in the past of kind of families, this still growth, not as much as in the past, kind of looking at also certain types of housing that may be challenged to maintain pay. Our short version of our solution or our outcome was two things. One is to really take a responsible look at the, those age groups that may be being underserved by housing types. And secondarily, to acknowledge the types of homes that were built in the last 20 years, based on the population, households that we have in place now to fulfill those, primarily those kind of growing family ages, to see St. Charles needs to continue on a strong growth rate to make sure that there's a market for those homes. So with that, I'm going to kind of wrap up and I think I've probably used my 10 minutes and move on from there. Pat, can I give it back to you?
Yes, if that's all right. Mr. Chairman, Joe, thank you. And what we hope still to show you now is a short video that further gives indication of the need for change. Emily Weinland, who's with the HBA, will technically make sure we get the video started. And I would like to introduce a couple of gentlemen in the audience who are here, members of the Home Builders Association, who if there's dialogue and questions afterwards, would be happy to join in and hopefully answer questions. Skip Stone is in the back there, Skip, with Lombardo Homes, and Rich Musler of Musler Engineering is also here tonight as well. We think the video just simply further says, we want to build good communities, but to do so, we've got to work together. We've got to work together to accept and recognize what change buyers want. Buyers don't want that 1954 home. They want different things than even sometimes just a few years ago. Emily, if you'll...
Since 1934, members of the Home Builders Association of St. Louis and Eastern Missouri have championed new home construction in our region. Home builders are not just business leaders in our community, they are our neighbors and like you, want to see the St. Louis region prosper. Therefore, home builders are committed to delivering the American dream, building quality homes that are safe, hold their value, and a source of pride. Building a neighborhood requires cooperation between the builder, residents, and local government. Many projects face opposition because of various myths that new homes deplete local resources and can negatively affect existing home values. Builders take these concerns seriously and third-party studies of communities in our region reveal the true effects of home building. There is a myth that new construction depletes resources, but new homes provide immediate benefits to the community and the family who purchases that home will offer continued support to help achieve local economic prosperity. In 2009, respected national economist Dr. Elliot Eisenberg studied the effects of home building in the St. Louis region and proved these concerns were unmerited. The home building numbers speak for themselves. The estimated first-year impacts of building one single-family home in St. Charles County include $16,000 in taxes and other revenue for local government, $199,000 in local income, and 3.2 local jobs. Additionally, the estimated annual reoccurring impacts of a single-family home in St. Charles County include $6,500 in taxes and other revenue for local government, $29,000 in local income, and .5 local jobs. Therefore, if you build two homes, there is an aggregate benefit of one new job in the community. Likewise, the estimated first-year impacts of building one single-family home in St. Louis County include $15,500 in taxes and other revenue for local government, $211,000 in local income, and 3.3 local jobs. Additionally, the estimated annual reoccurring impacts of a single-family home in St. Louis County include $6,500 in taxes and other revenue for local government, $31,000 in local income, and .5 local jobs. But to reap these benefits, builders welcome the opportunity to work with local governments to assure that communities are created that meet the needs and wants of the buying public. Another myth is that government should not vary from the plans originally approved for a new community. But allowing a project that may seem to be outside the scope of what the government normally allows, or to deviate from what was originally planned, creates opportunity to meet market demand and enhance the community. A recent example of this can be found at the Meadows of Wildwood. Here, a builder was able to resurrect a stagnant senior living community by constructing single-family homes in lieu of the originally approved detached villas. These homes are known as jewel box homes and are complete with exceptional detail and desired market features. The city allowed for planning and zoning changes to reposition the community to fit current market conditions. And this flexibility and cooperation has brought about tremendous success for the neighborhood. There is a fear allowing new homes to be built near existing homes that are smaller in lot size or square footage will lower property values of nearby larger homes. In fact, the extensive St. Louis residential land use study by the McReynolds Appraisal Company used actual sales price data for nine locations in the St. Louis region to prove that well-planned residential developments, including a range of lot sizes and house prices, can actually enhance the value of existing nearby residential properties. For example, the original developer of the Hamptons intended to have a community of primarily large attached villas. However, after experiencing difficulty in the market with the housing downturn, a different builder is purchasing the remaining lots in the Hamptons. After working with the city of St. Charles and community trustees, the builder was allowed to subdivide the lots for detached villas and change building elevations and materials. Despite the variations, the new builder was able to blend the new homes into the existing community and the Hamptons are now experiencing great success. Another challenge can exist when a new builder buys lots from the original builder or developer. In such cases, some feel the new builder should produce homes that are exactly like those that were originally constructed. Actually, home values, job creation, and tax revenue for local governments will always do best when the builder is allowed flexibility to meet the market demand and alter home styles when needed. Everyone benefits when a neighborhood is completed with homes that meet market demands. No matter the variance from the original product, new homes are preferable to vacant lots. Appraisers often point out that putting too many homes of the same type in a market can lead to an oversaturation of supply and start to lower property values. And the additional homes protect the early investment of initial buyers, lead to additional construction jobs, and the establishment of new households helps the community at large. The neighborhood of Bellmead experienced difficulty during the housing downturn. After the original developer and builders experienced hardship, the remaining lots were purchased by other builders who began to build homes different from those originally designed for the subdivision that met the changing market demand. Initially, there was opposition to this change within the community, but since construction on the new homes began, most concerns have subsided. Today, it is a thriving community where homes of all styles and price points blend together to form a cohesive and successful neighborhood. Sometimes, there is a fear of high density and lack of rigid development standards. This anxiety leads to the conclusion that working with a developer and builder to create a community with high density and mixed-use structures will not benefit the community. Instead, all developers and builders should be held to a stringent standard outlined by the local government. In fact, allowing a builder and developer to create a unique residential neighborhood is best for the community. The creativity that will result will attract new families and the overall environment will enhance the area. Cooperation between government, developers, and builders is the key to success for all parties involved, including future residents. Bruce Evans, the Director of Community Development in the City of St. Charles, had this to say about Newtown. "The planning and development of Newtown has been a collaborative effort between the city and the developer. As the first true new urbanist development in St. Charles, Newtown presented unique challenges and opportunities for both parties. Residential properties incorporated zero lot lines, reduced setbacks, unique building codes, and a variety of lot and home sizes, all strategically planned with high density in mind to create a walkable mixed-use community. Through close collaboration and regular communication, those development challenges and creative concepts have been and continue to be addressed with continued growth. The result is a groundbreaking, innovative, mixed-use project the city is proud to have in our community." With creative ideas and an understanding of today's changing market, builders want to work with government to provide neighborhoods that provide a sound investment for your community, employment for local workforce, and beautiful homes that will attract new residents to your area. Each home built is a significant financial investment for a family willing to combine its future with yours.
Mr. Chairman, that really concludes our program. All we want to do is try to earn your trust, merit your trust, and be a resource when you have land use issues that perhaps we can provide private sector input, is you try to do what's best for the citizens of the county. Thank you for your time tonight on your agenda.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question, if that's okay to ask.
I think it is.
What kind of homes are they wanting built? You said they don't want the homes that are currently out here, but what did your research find? What kind of homes do they want built? Or do they, do they want actual homes or, like you were showing the villas in that particular?
Well, there's two things. One is the neighborhood and the other is the pipeline. And we have a quite a significant change in demographics makeup or preference these days as far as where we want to live. I'll say that the video showed a lot of areas where there are different types of homes included in it. And we're seeing a growing increase of that. Now, Newtown is a very good example of that. Newtown is a style of class community. If we take that away and said if you wanted a successful home, it's really a good mix of housing choices within that same community. And that's one trend we're seeing, is that in terms of people wanting to, one, move away from the community as they age and retire, they want to stay local. Families want to stay closer to the other, kids move away. And so seeing the composition of the community or the neighborhood, they have greater starting ability, have more elements, different types of houses at, instead of a single one. The second type of home in a living community are things like jewel boxes, smaller type homes, if you have more choices there. If you, if you look through St. Charles County, yes, we have lots of different choices here. When you look at the numbers of the different types of houses compared to the demographics you're going, it is out balanced in terms of us being prepared for the, primarily for the first or second buyer variation, as well as the ones that ate. We do have a lot of villas in St. Charles County, but I think we're in a kind of post, obviously a post-villa time for a time, but we're looking at a villa community being something different in St. Louis County.
Isn't the CUP though, you can bring a development to the county under CUP and actually offer whatever, have a plan, whatever you want, right? So in that respect, it's pretty flexible, wouldn't you say?
I'm not, I was looking at essentially what we have on the ground, looking at what we have planned as far as developed lots and lots that we're planning compared to what we're seeing in the U.S. Honestly, I've not looked at your plan that you have.
Oh no, I was asking, Pat, what I'm asking is, is there something, is there, like, do you guys have something in mind or is there...
Actually, Councilman Brazel, you're right on target. You're absolutely right. With the CUP, you can get there with flexibility. And that's certainly what we're encouraging. But we're also encouraging as you move forward, that perhaps the straight zoning categories may need more flexibility, where you don't have to necessarily come forward with the CUP proposal. We're not here tonight to say you need to specifically do A, B, and C, but yes, you're exactly right. You can do the CUP and get whatever everybody agrees is a good thing to do. Just a good example, we fought in St. Louis County, fight's the right word, we advocated for many years in St. Louis County that they not have such a, we wanted a steeper minimum grade requirement so that we could save more vegetation, because if you've got to grade it down, obviously, whatever vegetation's in there, you've got to get rid of it. But they were insistent, and there was specifically written in the county ordinance, that saving trees would not be an acceptable reason for granting a variance for allowing a steeper grade. And we advocated for a long time, for a long time, persuade, convince, and finally get the change to where steeper grades were on occasion allowed by right, so that you could save vegetation, often very mature vegetation. Meandering sidewalks is another great example of rather than originally right down next to the curb or right next to the street, allow sidewalks to meander where they are going around mature trees so you can save trees rather than have to take them down. Oftentimes, our committee certainly realizes that saving mature trees is a benefit to all concerned. You're absolutely right, you can do them in the CUP, but you also think that the straight zoning categories perhaps could use some intention to allow a greater degree of flexibility.
Joe, thanks for pointing it out graphically. You know, one of the things I've noticed in St. Charles City in particular, so we have an awful lot of empty nesters that are still living in homes that are, you know, four-bedroom, three bathrooms and, you know, sit on a half acre of ground. You know, and we had to, exchange students come and stay with us for a while and they really pointed that out there and said, this is, you know, it doesn't happen that way in Europe. It, you know, there's much more housing that's sized appropriate to the, to the family, not just staying in the family home. But I see that happen more and more and yet we seem to have zoning, we have planning rules that encourage building larger homes, not the other way around. Have you seen other communities that have changed their requirements or their zoning codes to encourage more of those jewel box homes? Not just cutting down the lot size, because I think we all have experienced small lots with small inexpensive homes, going back to the, you know, the lot is 20% of the value of the home, that old rule that's been out there for a long time.
I could probably speak better to areas that are struggling with that farther down the road than what we're talking about here, but I think that there are, if you look at the scenario of families growing up in a house, kids moving away, having kids, kind of liken the area that we live in. You can look to various, certain areas in West County or St. Louis County where there's not been that replacement type housing that we're talking about, the empty nest that you moved to. So they're staying in their homes longer than they expected. So, they're staying in their homes longer than they expect, which is when they're, they're not directly, their kids were moving back then to repopulate the schools, to bring in the sales packs around them, because there is just a, it's apparent, if kids move out, there's no kids going to school. That's only apparent. What's less apparent is how the household spending really drops off when the kids move out. And when we did our research, we began to make that tie back into the, all the economic that you don't get if you don't have that continuity of housing, what you can move to. So, I hope that answered that. There's been some select places with the jewel box ordinance, it's been, I think, more on an individual basis than an area that.
Seems to me the biggest problem with housing in St. Charles overall, St. Charles County, is that so many things got built all exactly at the same time, and those people are all there until they die. And you almost have to wait for someone to die to be able to buy back into some of the more desirable neighborhoods. And so, we don't have that influx of new kids coming on a predictable basis. We have these spikes and valleys that really mess up the planning from the school standpoint.
Again, we didn't put all the slides in there, but you begin to see this really extended length of residents in St. Charles County, the house you're talking about, to the point that it's about to match the same average of the housing for the existing homes, is almost in St. Louis County.
Mr. Cronin.
My district is a real diverse district, because I have rural areas, and I have a city, a good portion of city will found in Wentzville, basically everything west of 79 and north of 70. And to be real honest with you, I think in my district, we have a good diversity of housing, and I think everything is working real good between the cities and the county. And give you an example, in downtown Old Fallon, you have Mr. McKee building senior citizens housing at the old convent. If you go out to Wentzville, my son's building a home out there right now, if you go to a restaurant in Wentzville, you won't see too many people over 30 years old. That's a younger community, and their housing needs, when you talked about three bedrooms and a bathroom, well, they're building three bedrooms with two bathrooms. It hasn't changed a whole lot. And then, I also see a lot of people that are mid-aged that are building large, multimillion-dollar homes on three-acre tracts in St. Paul, Flint Hill, and Josephville area. So, I hear what you're saying about flexibility and, you know, but I think, I think right now, I think we've got a pretty flexible, pretty diverse pattern to work with, at least in my district. Now, my district will be dramatically different than some of the other guy's districts, okay? But, and I think that, you know, one of the things that I came from a city government before this, and one of the things that I think does work real well, is we have existing residents that are used to the urban area, a rural atmosphere, and you try to put a more urban development in. Buffering is an awful good concept to use, and that's worked well in the St. Paul area, which I believe Mr. Lombardo, which is headed that way. So, I mean, you can accommodate both people that don't want to see vinyl houses, but still allow a density that makes the economy develop feasible for those folks to build houses.
I agree with you, it was part of the awareness factor that you bring up, critical. When we looked at it and said, okay, in an area where 30% of the homes have been built in the last 20 years, that's a fact. If you look at other areas that are developing slower, they kind of have that conversion of houses that are in the sort of factors, smoking, and so, part of our, this was suggested in the awareness that you were just talking about, that is something that we feel like is needed to be aware of and address, so we can build, we need to create that type of housing in other areas that are slowly developing, and kind of build over this area.
I'd like to add real quickly to Mr. Cronin, Councilman Cronin's going to comment. I hope that our message didn't come across as criticism of what you're doing now, and that there's no question that this county is really the shining star of the St. Louis region and the vision of all of you, as well as your predecessors, is a big reason for that, the fact that we have created a very good place to live, work, play, and do business. And we just want to see that continue, and we think one of the best ways to make that happen is if we're in communication and talking about the various niches that exist in housing and how some of those are changing.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate your, you know, your time and efforts, and, you know, I think that the line of communication, I think, will remain open, and when you have things to present to us, we'll certainly be open to them, and vice versa.
Thank you very much, your guide.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a discussion regarding sign regulations, and we'll start out with Mr. Hazelwood making little introductions and so forth.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everybody. I'm here this evening to be sort of the initial person to present this item to the council. This is a very minor revision to clarify a distance requirement in the signage piece of the UDO. I'm here accompanied this evening by Bill May. Bill will carry primarily the discussion in a minute. Bill is the Executive Director of the Missouri Outdoor Advertising Association, came up from Springfield today, and with him is Joanne Grasser. Joanne is from a local sign company, DDI Drury Display, Inc., and Joanne was what I'll characterize as our research associate who helped us pull together some information. The handout here that Joanne has just given you, one of the things Joanne did was she tried to capsulize the current requirements in the signage provision that is pertinent to our discussion on these distance factors. So, you know, we would point out to you that the code presently limits these kinds of signs to major roads, you have to have a certain kind of zoning, and then you get into these other design criteria, one of which is spacing. The Missouri Outdoor Advertising Association has to deal with requirements that are established by local communities, by the state, by, to some extent, by the feds, and they reach out for consistency as much as they can, because obviously with a large number of different governing bodies, you can run across various kinds of impositions. One aspect that is not clearly stated in the St. Charles County UDO is how to measure the 2,000-foot distance between signs. In the industry, they use a term lineal, which means you measure on the same side of the street. There is another concept that's radial, where you take the potential site under discussion, and you measure in a radius fashion all around it. And I think Bill can explain to you some of the distinctions to be drawn there. Joanne's research in the St. Louis metro area, she looked at governmental entities that border Interstate 70, Interstate 64, Interstate 44, so major highways, and of the 53 jurisdictions that she studied, those that speak to the lineal standard for measuring this distance, number 34, there were four that used the radial, and the others said nothing about the topic. You're in that category. So, anyhow, it would be helpful to the discussion, and I think in fairness, I want to say, apparently this is an interpretation that has been in place since the UDO was enacted back in the late 1990s. And another thing that Joanne did was she did some studying to determine what impact it would have. If you use the radial approach, right now, there's only one spot in the county that would measure up, so to speak, no pun intended, but.
Where would that be?
It's on Highway 79.
Yeah.
And so, and Joanne can probably tell you exactly where it is, Councilman Cronin. And this would not have a serious impact, in fact, it would only add three more sites, one of which is actually a MODOT site, and so, it's not available for usage as a sign location anyhow. So, it's really a minor change. The purpose is to make your provision consistent with these other, not only the local municipalities, actually the states, I'm going to, I'm getting onto Bill's turf here, but the state statute actually calls for the use of a linear measurement, and MODOT has issued some regulations itself that speak to a lineal measurement. So, with that modest background, the materials that have been handed to you are just to kind of help you out. We have, the top sheet there gives you a capsule analysis of your current provisions. There is an email that I sent to the council back in late September, it gave some of the same background. One of the attachments to that email was language that we were proposing to change to the, using a distinct reference to the lineal measurement, and then the last couple pages are the current provisions, which as you can see, when you get to the Section C and the Section E, they refer to within 2,000 feet in both of those sections, but they don't use either the word lineal or the word radial. We would reach out to the council to consider inserting the word lineal in there to make it consistent with other provisions. Bill, you want to take the floor?
If you all don't mind, I told the chairman I need to be down the hill for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, down the hill. You're in good hands with Bill, he's the world's expert.
Keith, you're going to the ball, yeah.
It's too late. It's too late.
He already gave his tickets away.
Keith, is there any particular location that this, specifically, are we talking about, or?
Well, I think Joanne can tell you where those other locations are, and so, you know, one look, I do know one location could easily get some attention in the future, but that's something Joanne's firm is interested in. But, yeah, really, it's, this is, the main purpose here is to get this uniformity, I mentioned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Keith.
I guess I'll still say, good afternoon, gentlemen. As Keith said, I serve as General Counsel and Executive Director to the Missouri Outdoor Advertising Association. I have worked with many cities and local governments drafting ordinances. I served as the Chairman of Springfield's Sign Review Committee when they redrafted their ordinance many years ago. This is a really minor change. As you can imagine, we deal with literally hundreds of local jurisdictions around the state. To my knowledge, there are less than 10 who actually use radial spacing. The state and almost every local jurisdiction use linear spacing, where they measure the distance between the signs on that highway. The language that we're proposing is actually from the state statute, so we're simply asking you to consider making your definition and your measurement consistent with what the state already does and what most other jurisdictions do. There's two reasons, frankly, why we're asking this question. I've had a number of our member companies in the area point out the fact that they have radial spacing in St. Charles County, asking us if we can maybe contact the county about adopting linear spacing. Your current ordinance doesn't really specify which, which means if you're a county official, you pretty much have to interpret that as being radial. If it says you've got to be 2,000 feet, doesn't say how you measure it, you know, the county's going to interpret it the way they have been for quite some time. The other reason that I'm here, as you well know, you're the fastest-growing county in the state, the supply of billboards have, has long since been surpassed by the demand of the business community in your county. We're to the point now where most of the time when we get contacted by business wanting billboards, where we simply have to turn them down. There are simply very few signs and a lot more demand than there are signs. This minor change, we're not, we're asking to change to 2,000 feet, this is a minor change that we believe would allow an additional three signs countywide. Those are primarily, a couple of those at least are on Highway 79. Billboards are only allowed on state routes. When the subject first came up, I asked Joanne if she could do a study for us and basically tell us what impact this would have. I mean, if it was something that we thought was going to allow 50 new billboards to go up, I wouldn't have brought it to you, and frankly, the county staff we've talked to, I'm sure would have been opposed to it. We presented this to Mr. Elman and some of the county staff probably four, five, six months ago, but we're to the point now, they've indicated so far, they didn't think they had a problem with this change, but we felt the time was right to bring it to you folks. If you have any specific questions, I'd like to, I prefer to let Joanne answer those because she actually did the study, but if you have any questions related to, you know, state regulations or what other communities are doing, I certainly would be glad to answer those.
I got a question for Wayne, for Wayne, actually. Wayne, you, did you look at this?
Did I look at the study?
Yeah, or did you look at this, this word change?
Well, I looked at a lot more information that she prepared. She basically went through all of the major routes in the county where we would permit a sign, and did an examination of where the signs were, and based upon a radial measurement, where could you have additional signs, based upon a lineal measurement on one side of the street, where could you have your signs? I reviewed her analysis and concur with her that based upon current zoning, there's probably only about three other locations that are possible if you changed from a radial to a lineal measurement on one side of the street. You could have, you could have two billboards in effect opposite each other, but they're on the opposite side of the street, where you couldn't have that today.
All right, so are we radius or are we lineal right now?
We're radius.
We are radius. The ordinance doesn't say radial, but it's the only way I can interpret it, because it says you have to be 2,000 feet away from a billboard.
And that would be the shortest way to get to 2,000 feet?
That's right.
Makes sense. So, you default to radial.
If you wanted to change, you need to specify that it's lineal and that it's measured on one side of the street.
But you, if, when was, when was this sign ordinance, was this when we, was this like in 2002 or something?
Oh, no, it's been this way since.
Okay, so this wasn't part of when we did other sign stuff?
No, no.
This impacts my district and impacts an area that's very important to me, okay? And the net result of all this discussion is three more billboards on 79, which is a very scenic road that's on Mississippi Flyway, okay? I'm familiar with DDI put up and down 79 in Lincoln County where they have no zoning, okay? But we have zoning here for a reason, that's to protect areas. That's a very scenic area along there. You have a lot of very wealthy people that own duck clubs down there that invest a lot of money for that scenery, and I will do everything I can to oppose this, because I do not want to see three more billboards on Highway 79, okay? It's no different, Joe, than you'd want more billboards on scenic Route 94, okay? 79 is a lot of, has a lot of scenic uses along there. The other thing is, that is a strategic flyway for the, what are those lit-up signs that you're putting all up and down 79, north in the Lincoln County? What's that doing to the migratory patterns of those birds? We don't know that, but you know what? I'll send this off to Ducks Unlimited if I find out three more billboards are headed that way. I think this is a, as far as how you measure things, I could care less, but the net result of putting more billboards on 79, I'm absolutely vehemently against. I don't have else to tell you that. I want to tell you straight up where I'm coming from on it, okay?
Let me, let me point out, if I can, billboards are only allowed under Missouri law in areas that are already developed commercially. It's not like you can go out and put a billboard up in a rural area where there's no business activity.
You're doing it in Lincoln County.
No, this is for St. Louis County.
No, this is for St. Charles County.
Sites on 79 are not necessarily sites that, we're not going to go out and build three sites. Besides the regulations, you need to have the landowner approve, you need to make sure it's visible from the highway, the topography. I haven't looked at any of that. All I'm saying is that...
You might be wasting your time, if you were franking, because most of that ground along there, a good portion of it, is owned by Adolphus Bush.
And property.
And also other duck clubs who do not care about the small amount of income they'll get from a billboard.
Exactly.
We can only put these up where a landowner agrees to it and where it meets all the state requirements. So if you have a situation where you had a shopping center go in, for example, that might be an area that it would qualify. The three signs that she's been, locations she's been able to identify, we don't know whether any of those a landowner would agree to grant a lease, whether anyone would decide, you know, there was even enough traffic count to justify putting it in. That is, the three is at most. And that's assuming a landowner was willing to allow a sign to go on that location. Obviously, if a landowner doesn't want a sign on his property...
Well, if the only reason for changing this is so you can put three more billboards on 79, what are we discussing?
It's your regulations. You know, I looked at 53 municipalities, like Keith had alluded to, all of them, every one of them, whether it was radial, the four that were radial, and the others that were lineal, all stated it. Yours is the only one that says nothing. So it's a real confusing ordinance, and all, the majority of cities are lineal spacing. All it changes, it just makes it clearer for us. Highway 79 is not an area that anyone's targeting for billboards, especially...
It sure did in Lincoln County, Alabama. How many did you put up there? At least 20, okay? Within the last year.
And we just, no, not, no.
Or two.
Let me ask a question, Mr. Chairman. Does it, Wayne, doesn't it, wouldn't it include additional billboards on 4061 also if we did this?
Well, I do not recall where these three locations were. I thought one was along Highway 61, 64. And I really can't remember where the other two were located.
I bet Joanne can.
Huh?
I bet Joanne can tell us exactly where those are at.
Exactly, if you, you know, yeah.
But the analysis that she did, and I reviewed, was based on what the current zoning is. You have to have, you have to be on a designated route to be able to build one, and you have to be zoned commercial or industrial. So based upon current zoning, if you change the way you...
That's the key to it.
...measure the 2,000 feet, you could potentially have three more signs. Now, you could have more than that in the future, depending upon how property is rezoned.
That's the reason that they want it. It's not for the signs now, but as the county continues to develop, there's going to be more signs, more locations that will be available because more of that farmland will become industrial or commercial.
Could potentially be...
But keep in mind, that has to happen first. Under state law, you have to, it has to be developed commercially for at least six months before it would even qualify as an area the state would let us put up a sign.
These would have to locate on it, and they'd have to meet all the other regulations.
And I, in all honesty, we're not coming here asking for this change because anybody wants to go out and put up 20 new signs on 79. That's just not going to happen. We're talking about three countywide. Just so happens, one or two of them are on 79, but you cannot have any new billboards go up unless you already have commercial development in that area, where then they're appropriate.
You know, I don't think our county is homogenous enough to have the same rules for every area. I-70 corridor is so full of billboards, I could care less if you put any more along there, okay? But there are places in the county that need to be protected from those, okay, because a lot of people do not like them, and a lot of people think it takes away from the aesthetics of the area. One being the Highway 79 corridor, and the other one being the Highway 94 corridor.
Anything that's designated as a scenic...
If you want to change this measurement, I don't have a problem with doing that if we protect those two corridors in this county, and there may be other areas in your old district that you feel the same way.
You can't legally, Harold, you can't legally exclude it like that, can you, if it's not a district? I don't think you can do that. We tried to do that with the Wayne, we tried to do it with the Wayne district, you can't do that, because it's not, it's not an actual district.
Right. Well, you know, we can do it in our sign regs, but basically, district regulations have to be uniformed.
Uniform throughout the county, yeah.
At the end of the day, are you really just asking, make it radial or lineal, pick one or the other, but define it, your preference would be lineal? Is that pretty much what I'm hearing?
For, like I said, for the two reasons I gave you, almost everybody is lineal, you know, and the fact that there is farmland demand for billboards in the county, then there is supply. I want to mention to you, you could, you certainly have the option of doing what Springfield did. They designated certain routes as scenic and simply banned billboards on them.
We tried, yeah, that was a disaster.
Well, there was case law up until about four years ago that said you couldn't totally ban billboards on a state route. That's, the law's no longer, the law's changed, the courts have said, yes, you can. So if there's a section of 79 you didn't want billboards to go in on, you folks simply can adopt an ordinance and say, we're not going to allow billboards on this.
There are some there. I'm fine with the status quo. I'm fine with leaving the billboards that are there, but I don't want to see three new ones, okay? I mean, I don't know how else to say that, okay? But I'm not going to pull any punches with this area. I've lived on that road, I live on that road now, I've lived on that road my entire life. I have farms up and down that road, I drive it every day, okay? So, I mean, that's kind of a lion in the sand, and I know who to call to get it, to help get it stopped, but I don't want to go that route. But I'm saying, if you want to measure them this way, okay, find a functionality that we can do to keep, it's Highway 79 in St. Charles County looking like Highway 79 in Lincoln County, okay? And I may be okay with it. As far as the lack of billboards, I'm also a retailer, okay? I can call an outdoor advertising sign and have a half a dozen sites in this county, okay, that I can rent a time. I'm not encountering what you're describing, okay, with a shortage of that.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes? Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify one point. I was present at the meeting the gentleman referred to, the county executive's office.
I think it's more accurate to say that the county executive did not lodge any particular objections towards this, but as you are well aware of, he almost always refrains from taking a position on something before it comes to the council, before he has a bill that he either has to vote yes or no on. So I just want to clarify that point. No one in the room, I believe, lodged any objections, but that's pretty typical of that sort of time period.
And that's the way I would characterize it, too. If the county officials had said, no, we have a big problem with this, you know, we're going to oppose it, we wouldn't be wasting your time.
One thing, one of the things I, you know, you've approached is the idea of avoiding confusion, right? We have, we have an ordinance that does not say radial or lineal, okay? So if we go one way or the other, then that's kind of what we're looking for, to avoid confusion. I guess my question for Wayne is, you've been doing this a long time, how many times have you been confused by what we have?
I've never been confused.
On this subject.
Again, it's the way the language is written in the ordinance, there's only one way I can interpret it. You go from A to B, and it's got to be 2,000 feet.
So it's a radius.
A radius.
Because that's the smallest default.
You know, one thing comes from the Cronin, you were mentioning that if you could eliminate some roads from this, maybe that would help. Well, actually, Councilman Branson's district is excluded when you get from Highway 61, 64, all the way out to Warren County, you can't have billboards on them.
On 4061?
On 94.
By whose law?
By ours.
Yeah.
We identify certain highways within the county that can have billboards on them, provided they're zoned C2 or industrial. And they have to be 2,000 feet apart, and there's some other requirements.
Well, as a compromise, maybe, let's look at doing the same thing for 79 and just debate changing that measurement.
Well, there's not, there's not been anything proposed, but I'm with you on this, Joe. I mean, I don't like billboards, I've never liked billboards, and I appreciate what the county does, making them as far and few between. And I know people in my district, or in the second district, don't want to see no more billboards if they're in whoever's district. I mean, you know, you go down 70, go into Mizzou or something, and they're everywhere. It's ridiculous, it's horrible. And I think the reasons we got some of these ordinances in place are good, in case of us having a clean, environmentally friendly county, that's, so I, you guys can, you know, you got to do what you got to do and understand that, but I'm not going to support any, anything that supports any more billboards. And like Mike said, it doesn't, you may only have three sites now, but in five years, you may have 20 more sites, and I will not, I'm not in support of that at all. I think the way Wayne does it is accurate and it's good for us. Now, if you guys want to propose an amendment to the ordinance, that's, you're more than welcome to do that, you just got to get someone to sponsor it and four votes.
Well, essentially, linear dimensions, it's every 2,000 feet. Radius, it would be every 1,000 foot. So conceivably, you could have twice as many.
No, it's true.
No, you're right. You could have twice as many with a lineal measurement on both sides of the street. The 2,000 is the radius all the way around from a...
All the way around is circumference, radius is half of a circle.
Right. So the, but between billboards, they have to be 2,000 feet.
You know, and these are some of the things you guys...
I use...
Wayne, we, I mean, the sign issues, you know, we fought, we went through this 10 years ago, and we had big battles with some of the sign issues in my district and stuff, and we really cleaned it up with, and all this, Mike, you had all them signs up north, remember that? And we had them all removed, and same thing down in southwest St. Charles County, we had them all removed, and we cleaned it up, and I think it's tremendous, it's working, you know? And so, I like the way we do it.
Well, the way the law is now, the state law, you cannot go in and build a billboard. You were talking about I-70. Years ago, we had counties that went in and zoned everything down both sides of I-70 as commercial. In those days, that's all you needed to get a state permit, it had to be commercially zoned. Well, that's been changed. Now, it not only has to be commercially zoned, but you also have to be in proximity of commercial businesses that are established and have been there at least six months. So you don't have a situation like you're talking about where you're going to see billboards going up in a rural area on a state highway where there's no commercial activity. But at the same time, you know, you may have shopping centers or, you know, who knows what kind of commercial development on that highway leading out from town as you go along. And in those instances then, once those areas were commercially developed, where you had shopping centers and car lots and whatnot, at that point then, we think it is appropriate to consider allowing billboards in those areas. You're not talking about having an impact on a scenic highway. But keep in mind, you folks have the power to basically say, we're not allowing any billboards on a particular highway. And Springfield has done it, other cities have done it. You know, if you have an area that you think is scenic, you don't want billboards on it, you have that right, and we're not trying to take that right away.
Okay. One comment, you mean, I, I don't think there's a lot, other than Highway 79, I don't think there's a lot of agricultural zone property on the interstates in unincorporated St. Charles County. My, I looked, I mean, I've looked at all the zonings, like you're saying that in the future, the zoning's going to change and we're going to build signs. I don't think there's really, other than 79, you have some agricultural...
Westminster West you got.
79's developed a lot, just in my lifetime.
A lot of that's in the city limits, there's very few parcels of property, I mean...
You've studied the maps more than I have.
Yeah, because I started thinking about it, there's really not a lot...
You've studied the maps a lot more than I have.
There's not a lot of future potential, other than what I put together, other than like, you know, 79 or some agricultural property, there's not a lot left, so.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. All right, we thank you, folks, and...
Thank you, folks, I really appreciate the time.
Thank you. We will now clean up and get ready for a regular meeting.
You have any miscellaneous topics?
I don't know if we really have time. I don't have any miscellaneous topics.
Oh, I don't either, actually.
No miscellaneous, we're good.
No miscellaneous. All right. You can't hurry, it's HPT computer. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you.
I am a lot sympathetic to all people.
I'm joining the ranks quickly.